Welcome, everybody, to today's City Council meeting of March 10. I'll be, my name is Wade Plott, I'll be acting as Deputy Mayor on behalf of Mayor Clayton, who is in Edmonton with meetings with our ministers. So we'll call the meeting to order and we'll do our National Anthem, please.
(Music) 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 Welcome to our very own Tenille Towns for that rendition of Oh Canada. From there, we will move on to our land acknowledgement. The city respectfully acknowledges the Beaver, Crani, Cree, Tana, and Métis people as the original caretakers of these lands and surrounding areas. We are grateful to live, learn, work, and play on treaty territory within Turtle Island and acknowledge these lands have been home to diverse and sovereign nations and Inuit nations since time immemorial. Okay, and we'll look for an adoption of the previous council minutes. Councillor Blackmore.
(Inaudible)
Oh, sorry, a very important one I missed, he's rushing along here. I'm gonna go to our CAO with a unfortunate message.
Thank you, Chair Plott. I'm, as per the Municipal Government Act, I'm here to inform council that Wendy Bosch has provided me with a letter of resignation. As per the Municipal Government Act, that letter took effect as soon as I received it, and I'm also required under the Municipal Government Act to inform council at the first council meeting, which is today. So with that, councillor Bosch's resignation is in effect, and council is not required to have a by-election, as we are past the January 1 date of an election here, and I'd be happy to answer any follow-up questions from that.
Okay, thank you, CEO Burke. Councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, Chair Plott. I am curious, just for the sake of the community so they know, so we could hold an election if we chose to, correct?
Thanks, Chair Plott, that is correct. Council may choose to hold a by-election. Looking at some of our recent experience with by-elections, the last by-election cost the city $125,000 with inflation and some of the new requirements for voter registration and paper counting of ballots, a tight estimate would be approximately $150,000 to run a by-election at this time. Likely it'd be a little bit more, there are some uncertainties, as this is the first, this would be the first occurrence under the new requirements of the province. Also, looking at timelines, the last by-election took approximately three months. We probably could shave a few days off of that, but a realistic scenario would be that it would be $150,000 in three months before a new candidate could be in office.
Councillor Bressi.
Yeah, and thanks, I appreciate that information, and I know I have had a few members of the community ask if I support holding an election, and personally, I really do take seriously having nine voices around here, but to give somebody four months in office isn't really a lot of time to get things done, especially when you take into account that we don't really do, the last month or two of a term, we really are just putting the bow on things, we're not, I don't think we're gonna be willing to start something significantly new that somebody felt they got elected in, so spend $150,000 to give somebody four months, I don't think would be a responsible use of our dollars. Also, I am concerned about, there are new election rules this year that our staff have to figure out, and this election is gonna look a little bit differently, and for me, I think the priority should be on giving our attorney-in-chief the ability to run a very awesome and a very well-run general election, not running a by-election that, again, will only give somebody four months in this role if they were successful, and so I appreciate the information, and just if the community's wondering why I don't personally support an election, that's why, I wouldn't, and I encourage my colleagues also not to push for elections to be held.
Okay, fair comments, Councillor Bressi, tend to echo those, I agree with you, I think that, as CEO Burke mentioned, it's not required, and so we'll move on with our agenda. So we'll go to our adoption of previous city council meetings, and I'll look to Councillor Blackmore, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. I guess we don't need any kind of motion to accept Wendy's resignation? Okay, I would move that council adopt the minutes of the city council meeting held February 24th as presented.
Thank you for that motion. Please vote. Mayor Clayton, how do you? Thanks for that, and now we'll move to our adoption of the agenda, and I'll go to Councillor O'Connor, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wade Plott. I'd like to move council adopt the agenda with the addition of item 10.2, Correspondence, Aquitara Utilities, Inc.
Okay, seeing nobody in the queue, please vote.
Bressi in favor.
Mayor Clayton in favor.
And that carries as well, so we have no delegations, so we'll start heading to our reports, and we'll go to our council approve the deputy mayor and committee report, and I'll just look to administration to introduce, please. I'm not sure from administration, where's, sorry, my apologies, we just, as we had, just accepted the resignation of councillor Bosch, we have to readjust some of our standing committees and boards. I'll look to CEO Burke.
So with councillor's resignation on February 25th, there are some proposals here to realign board and committee appointments, as well as the deputy mayor's schedule, so those are here for council, as required, for council to approve.
Okay, thanks for that intro. Councillor Thieson.
Yeah, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Plott. I would move that council approve the deputy mayor and committee appointments from March to October 2025 as presented. Just speaking to this, as CEO and deputy mayor Platt mentioned, with councillor Bosch's resignation, we've had to parse some things out, so there's a bit of a sharing of deputy mayor duties over the next four weeks, as well as some changes to our standing committees and external committees as well. So I'd encourage everyone to approve this.
Okay, appreciate the motion. Councillor Thieson, Councillor O'Connor.
Yes, I discussed with the mayor this morning that I sit on a committee called the Invest Northwest Strategy Committee, and it's not on the list, so unless it's called something else, so I'd like to request that this be submitted as an add-on to this Legislative Services meeting.
Okay, I'll just look to...
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. That one was a separate motion, and it was already made, and that one will still stand. It has been updated on the city board and committee website.
Okay, thank you, I just noticed that, so thank you very much.
Okay, so we will just go back to the main motion, as I see no other people in queue. Please vote.
Bressi in favor.
Councillor O'Connor in favor.
And that carries, so we'll head into our committee business, and we'll start with our Investment and Strategy Committee, and I'll look to Councillor Bressi, please.
Thank you, councillor Plott, I would move that council receive the minutes of the Investment Strategy Committee as presented.
Okay, thanks for that, councillor Bressi.
And I will be voting in favor.
Mayor Clayton, how do you vote?
It just hadn't popped up yet.
Okay, and that carries. You had a few items of business, councillor Bressi.
Yes, thank you councillor Plott, sorry, I'm just multitasking so I can re-log into eScribe and hopefully actually vote. So, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think my first motion is, I would move that council approve the grant recommendations as found in Appendix A.
That is correct. So this is grant recommendations, I'll look for discussion or debate on this first motion. Okay, seeing none, please vote. And that carries, back to you councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you, and my apologies, I missed speaking to those briefly, but those were recommendations that went through our Pursuit of Excellence Committee, so got vetting and got recommendations coming from some awesome community volunteers we have that help us do our duty diligence and do this work. The next motion I'm gonna make is the council approve allocation of the 2025 Large Scale Tourism Grant funding in the amount of $50,000 to 2025 Grand Con event, and allocation of the 2025 Large Scale Tourism Grant funding in the amount of $50,000 to 2025 Grand Prairie Traditional Powwow. Just to speak to this, the Large Scale Tourism Grant is a funding bucket that council's created to help large-scale events that will be attracting thousands of people to our community get off the ground and spend a few years being sustainable so that they can get their footing. These are two events that have happened in the past but are still building themselves out, and I think they're well worth our support because they're bringing great things to our community, and more importantly, for this grant funding bucket, they are bringing people to town who are spending money on hotels, meals, retailers, and all those other economic activities we want to encourage.
Okay, thanks for that councillor Bressi, I've seen nobody in queue, so I just have a question for admin myself, as I wasn't on this committee when it come. Just reading in the report, it says under Grand Con and actually Powwow, they're not hitting their numbers as far as how many people are supposed to be traveling from outside of the district. I'm just, I'm just curious why admin wanted to support that if they're not meeting our criteria.
There we go, thank you for the question. So we have recommended in the past a lot of groups that don't quite make the criteria, we did only have the three applications this time, so we still recommend the two as they're still within their infancy and still eligible for the grant, so we wanted to give them the opportunity to continue running these events with support.
Okay, and just one other question, is there another intake period this year, or would these closed off, would this close off our large-scale tourism? Even if there, if there was money that was left in the fund, I guess with, if we approve this today, that'll be totally subscribed, but if there was money left, would there be another round of intakes?
Typically, no, but if there was funds left over, we would likely put it back out for opportunities to apply.
Okay, I'm wondering if councillor Bressi, if you wouldn't mind splitting the motion, I...
Yeah, my understanding is that's, any member of council can request that, and it's a discussion of the chair, so...
Okay, so if you could split the motion, I would like to separate Grand Con and Powwow individually, please.
Yeah, so I think you just call for the vote on them separately.
All right, I'll look to legislators to set that up for me. For us. Okay, so the first one's for $50,000 to 2025 Grand Con event. See nobody in the queue, discussion or debate, so please vote. Pardon me. Oh, sorry, in favor, didn't pop up, sorry. And that carries, and so we'll go to the next round.
$50,000 in grant funding to the 2025 Grand Prairie Traditional Powwow.
Okay, any discussion or debate on this one, councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. Ms. Bieberdorf, I know that historically, the Grand Powwow has had difficulty tracking where people come from at the door. I'm wondering, as this is a criteria for this grant, if we've had discussions with them about how to ensure that that tracking does take place, or to come up with suggestions to make sure their numbers can be filed at the end.
Yes, thank you, Chair Plott. We have had that conversation with them, and I know they were working at that at Bonnetts, trying to track the postal codes at the door. It is being held at Evergreen Park this year, so that's a conversation we'll have to have with them about what that looks like at Evergreen Park.
Just while I have you there, same question on that, is, so looking at their budgets, we're just over, well, over 25% of the budget for this year, 22% of the budget, that number's kinda held the line for the last little while. If we weren't funding this, would this just be coming at a loss for Powwow to run this event?
Thank you for the question. I would assume they would have to obtain additional grants or sponsorship to make their event successful. I do know they did apply for roughly $18,000 from the county, and they did receive about $10,000 gift and kind from Evergreen Park as well, but I believe they would have to fundraise additional money to cover the cost of the event or reduce the number of services they're providing.
Yes, for me, I'm just gonna be, I'm struggling with giving the full amount on this one. They haven't met our criteria, we're paying substantially for the amount, and honestly, this year it's not even in the city, so I'm struggling with the full amount, but I'll go to councillor O'Toole and see what my other colleagues are thinking.
Yeah, I was just wondering if the applications were filled out properly this year for this event.
Thank you, yes, we actually have a new online portal, and they can't submit until they fully complete the application form and attach all the documents through the portal.
Because I know that was a problem for a number of years. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody, oh, councillor Burke.
I'm also in the queue.
Oh, sorry, Mayor Clayton.
Yeah, this is something that I'm in favor of, it's a great cultural event, and I know that they've struggled with administration, administrative duties the last couple of years, as per councillor O'Toole's question, but I think going forward, knowing that there is some money on the line, they're doing their best to get those administrative duties, which are all volunteer in line, so I'm quite confident that this year they'll come through.
Okay, thanks for that councillor Burke. Mayor Clayton.
Thanks, Chair Plott. I appreciate your concerns, Chair Plott, and I had a couple of questions for Ms. Bieberdorf. I'm just struggling with my eScribe today to pull up the report, but if I recall correctly, they had approximately 2,000 people on site per day is what we thought, 2,500, I think, I think it sounded. So they're not meeting the total visitors in our expectation, as I understand. However, we don't have great data in regards to the other criteria, that the visitors be 100 kilometers away, last, the request is $50,000, and last time, our total contribution was gifting kind, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, they had gift and kind for Bonnetts.
And they, remind me of the gift and kind amount?
Off the top of my head, I don't know the exact number, I wanna say it was around the $20,000 mark, maybe 25,000.
Okay, okay, I thought it was a little bit higher than that, but that's fine, regardless. I think that this event is something that we as a council agreed would be a great addition for our community to learn more about cultural Powwows, to have a better integration of indigenous events into our community. We, to be honest, we were the ones that initiated the conversation, saying, why don't you take your Powwow indoors, it may be more conducive to people experiencing it, as opposed to outdoor, it has weather variables, it's really in its infancy as an indoor event, but to councillor Plott's comments, I don't love that it's leaving the city, and then in turn the city would be the largest funder. I do want to, however, support this event, and so, Ms. Bieberdorf, knowing that the last couple of years it hasn't met the criteria, what would we do, two questions, what would we do for other events that hadn't, in a couple of years, met the criteria? Would we still suggest to council, would we still recommend to council to support them if it was another event, say Grand Con hadn't met the criteria, or Bear Creek Folkfest or other ones that we've funded through large-scale tourism in the past? And then my second question is, if it wasn't through this fund, what other opportunities are there from City of Grand Prairie funding?
Bieberdorf.
Thank you, Chair Plott. So I probably can answer both of those questions in one, so if we have other grant applications within large-scale tourism, and there's others that meet the criteria, we can either reduce the amount that we're recommending for this group, or we could recommend that they apply for festival funding, which would give them up to 14,000 per year, or they could explore other avenues like sponsorship.
So would a councillor Plott, if you wouldn't mind, if I had another question?
Go ahead.
So would it be fair to say that administration is recommending this based on the number, on the uptake of the applications, or are they basing the recommendation of 50,000 because that's what they asked for, and you have confidence in the event being successful and growing this year?
Thank you, Chair Plott, it would be a little bit of both. We didn't have things like the air show this year, so we didn't receive an application from them, we only had the three and only felt that the two met the criteria. So, one, we had funds available, and two, we do feel that the event is gonna grow moving into the new location, larger space, air conditioning, all those components, camping.
So, last question, Chair Plott, if council were to approve $25,000, because we think that this is a good addition to the region, you know, we're supportive of the Powwow as an event, it's an event that's not in our city, and our other large-scale tourism events are in the city, but we think that it's good as a cultural event and good to be on the list of regional events that take place. So if we were to only fund $25,000, do you think the event would continue? Would it be scaled back? Do you have any information to sort of help us with that decision?
Thank you, I don't have that information right in front of me right now, I would say they would have to fundraise the additional money, I don't think they're intending to make money off this event, so they would have to fundraise or find additional grants and sponsorship to run the event as is, or scale back some of the components of the event.
So, Chair Plott, my concern is primarily that this event isn't in the city, I can't think of another large-scale tourism event that we've funded that wasn't in the city, and so maybe that's my, another question for administration, has there been other large-scale tourism events that apply? You know, I know that multi-sport games have been qualified for this funding, but the majority of them have been located in the city, has there been other large-scale tourism events that have received such significant amounts of funding that haven't been in the city?
Thank you, Chair Plott, yes, the most recent ones would have been the stompied when they were still funded through this stream of funding.
Right, okay, okay, thanks for the information.
Councillor Blackmore.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. Ms. Bieberdorf, correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems, from my memory, that last year they did not apply for large-scale tourism. We ended up piecemealing together a bunch of funding to ensure their event took place, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct, most of it was gift and kind.
Okay, and so I feel that this year they've, they've made strides with organization, they've managed to complete their applications, and not just us, but to other organizations, and I think that's very positive. So, while I agree with Mayor Clayton, it's disappointing that they're no longer operating within the city, I think it's challenging for us to tell them at this point in time that we're not prepared to fund them to the full 50,000. I would personally support the original motion, knowing that going forward, we have options for asking additional questions next year, such as, did they meet their criteria, did they track their postal codes, and how successful have they been to continue? And how successful have they been to continue to clean up the organizational side, which we know they've struggled with in the past?
Thanks for that, Councillor Blackmore, Councillor Berg.
Yeah, thank you Deputy Mayor Plott. Just commenting around the county versus the city, I know that, and I don't even know the dollar total, but Growing the North was a significant event that the city was a major sponsor in, and that was in its entirety out in the county. And that's purely based on the facility that they have, that the city doesn't have. And two things that I understand with the Powwow that were important to them is, one, air conditioning. It was extremely hot in the arena, which was quite hard on some of the elders and the dancers, because they're all dressed up in regalia, and it got quite hot in there, and we just don't have the same air conditioning that Evergreen Park does. But camping was also something that was important, where that is an integral part of many Powwows, that they camp around there and around the event. And again, we are in a downtown facility, so based on a couple of those things, again, the city just doesn't have the building that they require, but I'm sure if we did, they would be happy to have it in the city.
Thanks for those comments, Councillor Berg, Councillor Bressi.
Great, thank you. So you can remind me again, so their current budget is two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, what was their budget last year? Do we know?
I don't have that information with me at the moment.
Thank, so do we know why the request, so this request for more than double what we gave last year? What I'm trying to figure out is, do we know if there's anything that they're actually getting with that request? Is that money being put towards an expanded event, is it making it for other revenue streams that have fallen behind? I'm just trying to figure out, why do they need the extra money?
Yeah, thank you Chair Plott, they do have a significant rental cost, they did get some gift and kind, but there is a big portion of rental costs required out at Evergreen Park, and we waived a lot of the fees when it was held at Bonnet's, so it's significantly more expensive to host there.
Am I misremembering the report then, thanks, I thought, if I remember the conversation at committee, that twenty-two thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars that we gave, that shows in the report is us giving them last year, I thought that included gift and kind to them, do you know?
Thank you, yes, that does include the gift and kind from last year.
Okay. I, yeah, for me, I am, I gotta admit, I am struggling with the full fifty thousand dollar ask here. That being said, I definitely want to support them. Something, if somebody does have a different amount that they're going to move, we amend this, I'd potentially be open to considering that. But for me, it just more is value around, is this money actually needed, or is it just wanted, is the city just? So I just don't understand enough about why this amount. But for me, them being out of the city doesn't bother me as much, as Councillor Berg under shared, I think there are good operational reasons they need to move out of the city, but also, there's nothing commercial on the south side of the city. So everybody who comes to it, they're staying in City of Grand Prairie hotels, they're going to City of Grand Prairie restaurants. For me, this grant fund really is about economic development, and I think it's just as likely to spur on our economy being in Evergreen Park as it is in Bonnet's Energy Center. It might feel very different if it was being held in Claremont, but the fact that it's south of the city, I feel pretty comfortable supporting it with a grant meant to boost on city economy.
Thanks for those comments, Councillor O'Connor.
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor Plott. I'm kind of tossed as well, I agree with Councillor Berg that they're moving for health reasons, and to respect the elders in a more cooling environment. But I also agree with Councillor Blackmore that we should not change the game this late in the game for them. So I prefer us to give them the full amount, and then have a more accountability and expectations for the next time. So I will support the main motion, but not this amendment.
Councillor Thiessen. So just so you know, Councillor O'Connor, this is the only motion, there's just the fifty thousand for Powwow, there's no amendments on it, it's just, yeah. Councillor Thiessen.
Yeah, thank you very much Deputy Mayor Plott. I was going to say that, but it seems like there's a theme going around here today. I want to talk about GICs, want to talk about air conditioning, want to talk about a lot of the stuff that's already come out. I guess the one thing that I should note is that in our large-scale tourism funding, it's not predicated to be in the city of Grand Prairie. The rules are, under Section Five, this, sorry, Section Four, the event takes place in the city, or in the county of Grand Prairie Number One, at Evergreen Park, or the Crosslink County Sportsplex. So even though we have concerns that this tourism event is, might go into the county, it's perfectly built into our bylaws for that, perfectly built into the funding of the large-scale tourism procedure. So I think that sort of makes that point moot. Now, just to speak to this, I agree wholeheartedly with Councillor Blackmore, Councillor O'Connor, in the funding for this event. I'd be probably more inclined to not want to fund the event if, after three years in a row of coming at the eleventh hour, that they came again at the eleventh hour, this time, they've got all their ducks in a row, they're putting everything together organizationally, and I think they're giving themselves an opportunity to grow in a venue that's going to accommodate all their needs, as well as be a tourism draw to the region, in Grand Prairie specifically. So I encourage council to keep the funding as is, because if we don't, then it's just, there's no other intakes. So this just sort of sits there into a pot, and eventually it'll go into general revenue, unless we have an emergency use for it later, like we did with the Powwow last year. So I strongly encourage everyone to support this motion as it is.
Councillor, thanks Councillor Thiessen, I just want to ask, Admin, when I look at the report, it says it's a three-day event, and so we'd had this report, we funded it in eighteen, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Have we collected data from any of those years? Have they given us good reasonable data in any one of the years we funded them?
Thank you, in previous years, because they didn't receive a grant, there was no requirements to provide back data on each of those events, because it was gift and kind, or a combination of other funding sources, there was no grant agreement that was signed.
So we don't, do we know how many people attend the event? I see it's projecting twenty-five hundred a day, but do we actually have numbers of how many people have attended in previous years? Because I appreciate it comes from different funding sources, but on our, we have funded this three previous times now.
Yeah, thank you, we do track the numbers, I don't have them right in front of me right now, but the projection of twenty-five hundred is based on previous year's attendance.
I'll just tip my hand, as much as I'd like to support it, I can't support the amount of fifty thousand. I appreciate it's a fund that we can utilize in other ways, and if we don't use it, it won't go prescribed potentially, but it will go back into general revenues, which is still, has a tax impact on our community. I don't like, I guess for me, I don't like that we have an organization, whether it be Powwow or anybody, if they're not doing their paperwork properly, and they're not filling out million or criteria, I have a hard time that we're funding them. And so Powwow aside, it could be any organization, I'm struggling with it, we're giving them twice as much as last year, and then hoping that we're still going to get data from them, so unless somebody's going to make a motion for a smaller amount, unfortunately, I can't support the full fifty thousand. Mayor Clayton, you have your hand up?
Yeah, thanks, I just have a couple of comments to Councillor Berg's comment. We actually don't give, we give very minimal money to Growing the North. We have a gift and kind agreement for a few thousand dollars. It's very small amounts that we give to Growing the North. To Councillor Thiessen's comments, yeah, I appreciate the comments about being in the city or not in the city in the large-scale tourism. For me, it's not about the location, I, as you know, I'm a big proponent for things that happen for the region. It's that we are the largest supporter, if this motion is supported, of the event that isn't in the city. And so not about where it lands, I think the Evergreen Park location, because of camping, is probably a better location for this event, camping being an important part and component, and as mentioned by somebody in regards to the comfort for elders and the air conditioning. So less about where it lands, more about the fact that we're the largest supporter of it. Question for administration, you mentioned that the county was asked to support for eighteen thousand dollars. Do you know if there's gift and kind on top of that, or was that the total contribution?
Thank you Chair Plott, that was the total cash contribution, the gift and kind, I believe, was directly from Evergreen Park, ten thousand.
Okay, okay, perfect, well, that's good to hear. I think that's something that's so valuable to the region, it needs to have participation from all proponents of this event. Yeah, but to Councillor O'Connor's point, and somebody else made it mention as well, this event is fairly far down the road. It'd be really unfortunate now for them to have to pivot if the amount was less. I do appreciate Councillor Black, or Plott's comments, that this needs to be consideration. So I strongly encourage us, and with that maybe administration, and it may have subsequent motion that will help us not be in this position at the eleventh hour next year, because this event is months away. And so in order to, if council were to support less right now, it would have significant impact, and really could be detrimental to the planners. So I will have a subsequent motion following this one, thanks.
Thanks for that, Mayor Clayton, seeing nobody else in the queue, I guess, no motions being up, please vote.
Bressi in favor.
That carries, Mayor Clayton, you still have your hand up, did you want to come back to it now, or later in the?
Yeah, you bet, I would direct administration to bring back a, or actually not a report. I would direct, and Ms. Bieberdorf, if you may already be doing this, I just want to recognize that I direct administration to work with the Powwow, Grand Prairie Traditional Powwow organization, and come back to council with information of opportunities before the end of this year. I think that if council is going to be making decisions on financial opportunities, that we need to be in that conversation earlier. And I think that our role, as mentioned before, is to support this event, we want to see it grow, we want it to be better. And if the next council chooses to fund this less, they're going to need the information in front of them much earlier than it is currently. So if the motion, as I mentioned, administration to work with the organization, and come back to council in the fall of 2025 with information of where the 2026 Powwow is headed. Because by then, you'll have information of how 2025 went, you'll have a new council, and potentially new priorities. You'll have information from the organization of what they're planning for 2026. And I think we can try to be that catalyst, and help the organization be in front of planning, and really support them in their planning needs. So if we start those conversations potentially earlier, maybe that will help. And if you're already doing that, I apologize, I just would like it documented, because I think it's important for not only the organization, but for the elected officials to know what the event is, and what the future of the event could be. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Mayor Clayton, the motion went on e-scrib, if you wanted to take a look, I just have a question for Admin. Just so I fully understand the large scale, once we've, now that that's been approved, the fifty thousand for Powwow, they'll get that funding no matter what, and then they'll bring a report back. Has there ever been a thought about putting some of a contingent on actually give us the information? I just, I guess my concern is, if any organization we funded, if they didn't supply us any information afterwards, would there be any repercussions to that organization?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So now that they're receiving funding under large-scale tourism, they will be required to enter into a grant funding agreement. So there'll be terms and conditions in that agreement, and if they don't meet those terms and conditions, then they likely wouldn't be recommended for future funding.
Okay, thanks for that. Mayor Clayton, did you have a chance to look at the motion?
Looks good, thanks.
Okay, any comments required, no, no debate on it, so please vote on the mayor's motion. And that carries, we'll come back to you, Councillor Bressi, for your next item of business.
Great, thank you Chair Plott, I would move that council receive, sorry, receive this Development Incentives and Grants Program update for information, I guess.
Okay, thanks for that. Councillor Bressi, any discussion or debate? Seeing none, please vote. Councillor Plott in favor? Mayor Clayton, how do you vote? Oh, thank you. That carries. Back to you again, Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, not quite sure why we said that to council, but I'll try to catch that next time. Now to do the actual substantial work coming out of that, I would move the council approve amendments to policy three-five-seven, Development Incentives and Grants Program as presented, and maybe I'll actually just leave it there for now, because I think the other ones, I think these should probably be split into quite different motions. But to speak to this one, really, there's a few housekeeping amendments here, but the main amendment going on here is, we have introduced a municipal fee rebate program for fiber optic cables. So basically, if somebody wants to get more fiber into the ground, we want to make sure we're not taking money away from them as a municipality to incentivize them to actually do something we really need in this community. So these amendments would put that policy into, put that program into this policy, so it's easier to find details of.
Okay, thanks for that. Councillor Bressi, seeing nobody in the queue, please vote on that motion.
Mayor Clayton in favor?
That carries, and back to you again, Councillor Bressi.
Thank you, I'd also move that council increase the budget for the municipal fee rebate program from seven-hundred thousand to one million dollars, transferring three-hundred thousand from the Economic Recovery Fund. Just speak to this, this municipal fee rebates are when there's projects that we want to see get going in town, such as a large multifamily development, there are hefty inspection fees that come along with that. These fees, they do cover some hard costs, but most of the costs these are covering are the soft costs of having staff time go into doing the inspection work, all of that. And this program is designed just to make it a little bit more cost-effective for people to get these projects that we want to get done, done, so that they can fill needs in the community, and start paying general tax revenue on a recurring basis. Right now, we've had indications, there's enough projects in the queue, that if we don't increase the amount, there'll be some projects that don't receive this funding, and maybe that might make the difference between them not going forward. So I would increase, I would encourage council to support this motion.
Thanks for that intro, Councillor Bressi, in motion, any conversation or debate? Nobody in the queue, so please vote. And that carries, and so we'll just come back to you, Councillor Bressi, for some meeting highlights, please.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, Councillor Blackmore, go ahead, please.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Plott. One of the issues that was brought forward and discussed at this meeting is apartment units and how we tax them. We had a request from a delegation at the meeting that we don't tax apartment units over a hundred thousand until they're, once they're through their construction, occupancy, and then for another number of years following. Well, I don't support that, because I think it's too extensive. I do believe that there is the opportunity for us to be a little more equitable, or even-handed in how we approach the construction of large apartment buildings, a hundred suites or more. And so I would move that we direct administration to bring back a report with options, itemizing opportunities, or bring back a report with options to look at how we tax buildings while they're under construction, speaking specifically to buildings of a hundred units or more. I'm looking at the CAO to see if that's a motion that is effective for administration, because I kind of lost track of where I was partway through the motion.
Okay, thanks for that, Councillor Blackmore, see you, Berg.
I'll, thanks Deputy Mayor Plott, I'll let our clerk here get the wording, but I think that's sufficient direction for us to bring back some options for committee, and ultimately council consideration.
Thank you, and speaking to that motion, I feel that from the time a shovel goes in the ground until the occupancy permit is delivered, there is reason to not collect property taxes during that period of construction. I think that by making that decision, we give those large-scale projects, which have had a lot of trouble getting traction in our community, and which our community really, really needs, given our lack of rental space. I feel that this is a way that we can support those large-scale developments, and yet not be, not be penalizing our own budget, or our own residents in, as, you know, if we're not collecting the taxes, or you're simply not collected, it's not like we're paying money out. And so I think that this is a matter that does need to be looked at by administration, that does need to be brought back to council for debate at a later time. So I would ask you to support the motion.
Thanks for that, Councillor Blackmore, Mayor Clayton.
Thanks Chair Plott. I actually support the intent of Councillor Blackmore's motion. I really worry about this delaying what's potentially going to be in the ground this spring. And so I'm wondering if maybe Councillor Blackmore can come back to this with an actual motion. If proponents who have already pulled permits, and who are, know the criteria that supports our multifamily right now, as in, you know, we've worked on our secondary suites, we've removed development permits and building fees. we've removed development permits and building fees, you know, we're really open to multifamily. We've really fast-tracked and supported those proponents who are looking to build multi. Now they know that council is interested in doing something with taxes, I worry about the potential delay that some of them may take. For us, it's about the number of doors we can get built as soon as possible. And so while I support what you're trying to do here, and maybe I'll ask the CAO, is there a motion that makes sense that council can discuss and debate today? If not, maybe we table this item of incentive grants until we have a chance to talk about this and add to it. I just don't want people holding back on building secondary because in anticipation that council may remove taxes while we're building. So I'll ask the CAO maybe for some advice.
Okay, thanks, Mayor Clayton. CEO Burke, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. Definitely a risk with looking at future incentives. I don't think we need a specific motion. I think the direction we have today is that there's incentive for administration to come back quickly with a report, so that this council can weigh in one way or the other with formal direction. We will move as quickly as possible. I don't have a timeline, but I do think it would benefit from some policy review as well, and not just simply a motion outlining exactly. So if there's will for us to explore something, we'll do that as quickly as possible and bring that back for committee and council consideration. One suggestion would be if it came back, I think committee is the better process, but one would be just for us to come directly back to a future council meeting to fast-track this. But I do think the motion on the floor is sufficient for us to move quickly.
Chair Plott, if, so, question for the CAO then, would you be in a position for this to come back to the next council meeting in two weeks? Building season is around the corner, and people will pause waiting this if council has interest in this.
Deputy Mayor Plott, thank you. Tent will be, but as this is a new initiative, I do think it does warrant full policy and legal review. So that will, we will attempt to bring it back as quickly as possible. That's an excellent target. I'm unable to commit to that until I have looked a little bit further into what's involved.
Thanks for that. Council Resty.
Great, thank you. No, thank you, Council Blackmore for raising this. I do think that our supplementary tax we charge to things that are under progress does have a role to play, because when a building's getting built, it does consume some municipal services, such as it still needs a fire department, it still needs police to respond to it. But right now, I'm really worried that some of these units might not go, especially in impact of some of the tariff issues we have right now, the supply chain issues we have right now. There's more uncertainty now, and there's more potential of a building taking a little bit longer than it might take during more rational times. And for that reason, I think the more we can de-risk potential delays, the more we should, given the light of what's going on in the economy right now. And so I'm glad that this motion's come forward and look forward to supporting it. And I hope that in two weeks, we get to have this debate, but totally also do understand that there's complications here, and we want to do it right as well.
Thanks for that, Council Resty. Just a question for CEO Burke and potentially the mover of the motion. I'm wondering if we put something at the end of the motion that said, if any grants were done, that we'd be retroactive to March 1st. I guess for me, I'm just wondering if we can put some wording in this motion that if a proponent was looking at doing a project right now, they're not just waiting on us to make a decision. They know that it's retroactive to March 1st. If they haven't pulled a permit now, then they're game. But if they're sitting in queue waiting to pull a permit, and they're waiting on this, I don't want them waiting. So I'm just wondering if there's a mechanism through legal or looked at maybe CEO Burke, of how we can maybe look at that motion that we'd signal, we're fine with open for business from a certain point in time. But if this takes a month to figure out, I do not want people waiting till May or June to start a project if they're ready to go now. CEO Burke, is that an option for us?
Yes, typically, we've done it as soon as there's been council direction, so it might be even today. But March 1st, March 1st would be an option. I don't have that in front of me to know exactly when different permits have been pulled. But if there was a direction as of today, we could start, that could be a good starting, or March 1st, that could be a good starting point for us to bring back options based on that direction.
So I'll go to Council Blackmore first, just to see if she's okay with potentially amending her motion.
I'm happy to have that added to the motion.
Okay. We'll just let legislators work on that. Will I go to Council Burke?
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I don't think this requires an amendment to this, but just a point that when we do our grants and incentives, we do have an end date, and then it's a chance to review to see whether we want to extend it or end it. I don't want to potentially have tax-free grants going in perpetuity. So I would like administration to explore some type of end date, be that the end of 2025 or the end of 2026, so that we can reevaluate and look at it again to see what the demand is and where we are in the economy. Thanks.
Thanks for that. Mayor Clayton.
I think that's a great point by Council Burke, and I think administration will just take into consideration aligning this initiative with the end dates of the other ones. So good point, Council Burke.
Thanks for the comments. Council Blackmore, did you want to close?
Thank you. I do want to close. One of the reasons that this has been on my mind a lot is the fact that we did not receive the Housing Accelerator Grant. And it's pretty, I think it's fairly clear that we're not going to receive the Housing Accelerator Grant. I don't know. That was, that was my read on the situation. And so I think, you know, that was an opportunity for some of our builders to take advantage of, which has disappeared off the table. I don't want projects to grind to a halt because of that. I feel that this kind of hits things in the middle ground, where we're still offering support and doing what we can to move projects forward, and indicating that those projects are very important to us. And so for these reasons, I would ask you to support the motion, and look forward to a report coming back from administration to give us the opportunity for further discussion.
Thanks for the motion. Please vote. And that carries, and we'll look forward to that report coming back for some good discussion. We'll go back to you again now, Council Resty, for your meeting highlights.
Great, thank you, Mayor Clayton. As Council Blackmore highlighted, we did have one delegation come speak to us about a specific project they're working on, and asking for, ask for some tax alleviation on that. And although this isn't exactly what they were asking for, I do appreciate Council Blackmore hearing them out and bringing a potential option to council. The one thing I also want to highlight from the Chief Service Area update is in early April, community group funding applications are going to open up with some workshops for groups that want to learn about them late March. So if there's anybody that's involved in nonprofit that should be applying for those grants, please be keeping your eyes out and clearing some time in early April to fill those applications.
Okay, thank you for that. So we'll go next to our Financial and Administration Committee, and as this is normally, Council Bosch, I'm going to ask if Council Blackmore, yeah, sorry, Public and Protective Services, and that's normally Council Bosch's chair, she's no longer with the organization, can I ask Council Blackmore to introduce, please?
Thank you. I would move that council adopt the minutes of the Public and Protective Services Committee meeting held March 4th as presented.
That, please vote.
Mayor Clayton in favor?
You had a couple items of business.
Yes. The Aging Well Together Action Plan was presented at committee. This followed a significant amount of input from stakeholder groups of people who are 55 and older, and is building on the information and the wish list that was brought forward by people in that age category. Council, or sorry, administration has done a really great job of building that action plan, and I look forward to seeing how it unrolls in the future. But in the meantime, I would move that council adopt the Aging Well Together Action Plan as presented.
Thank you for that. Council Blackmore, Council Burke.
Yeah, thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. This was an excellent report, and just compliments to the staff that put this together. I was very impressed. So when I say this, it is not with criticism, but more, it's just something that I think that may have been missed. I'd love to see more focus on arts and culture for seniors. I just finished reading a book that I quoted in committee about how arts and culture really helps develop the mind, be it music, pottery lessons, different things like that. We have the facilities here, so just want to remind the people that read the report that it's not forgotten, and that we do recognize that Aging Well Together also includes the arts and the culture.
Thanks for those comments. Yeah, the report did have a lot of amazing information, and I think between our census recently and this, there's some amazing data, if you're looking for information on our city, and some great information for economic activity as well. So if nobody else in the queue, we'll vote on that motion, please.
Mayor Clayton in favor?
And that carries. I'll go to Council Resty, please.
Great, thank you. I also would like to make a motion that I hope council indulge me in, and that is, I would like to move that we direct administration on bringing back to the appropriate standing committee a report on working with applicable agencies to automatically enroll seniors who qualify in our Recreation Access Program and our low-transit programs. And just speak to that. I do know, I talked to residents who qualify for these programs. They don't know they exist, or there's, or especially in the case of seniors, there might be significant barriers to enrolling if they have troubles with technology, or they have troubles getting around. I really think that as people age, it's important that as much as possible, they're able to get around our community on transit, they're able to get out to the East Link Centre, they're able to take part in programs. And I don't think we should create extra barriers for them to enroll. I know that seniors outreach fills out tax returns and would pretty quickly be able to know if somebody should be applying for our access programs. And I would sure love to see a process put in place where people could automatically or quickly apply. I don't know if there's other organizations on top seniors outreach, that's why I left this motion broad. But for me, just the more people we can get enrolled, the better. So I hope that council will support this motion. There might be complications I'm not aware of that make this prohibitive, but I'd at least like to know what it would look like to create automatic enrollment if we wanted to.
Thanks for the motion. I think it's a great idea. I'm just, I'm curious, and I guess I'll look to administration with the way the motion's written. Are you comfortable with this motion and feel you can action it the way it's written?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Plott. Comfortable bringing back a report. Already just aware of some, comfortable bringing back a report, and we'll identify what's possible and what might be more challenging, so.
Cool.
Accept that.
Yeah, and just speak to it. It's, this is in direction to go do it. I know that this seems easy, but it's really easy as a politician say, hey, that seems easy. And there's, and administration often comes back with very valid reasons why something we think sounds easy isn't as easy as it actually sounds. And so open to have that discussion, and maybe it is, maybe it isn't a practical idea. I don't know. But it's something that I've been talking about for years, so I feel like I need to actually make a motion at some point to make it happen, not just talk about it.
That's fair. Seeing nobody in the queue, please vote. Okay, we'll come back to Council Blackmore to look at our wildfire mitigation. Somebody loves to talk about trees, so.
Well, thank you, Council Plott. I do love to talk about trees, but in this case, it's really not trees we're talking about, but all of the understory. I would ask that council support the city's grant application to Phase 2 of the Forest Resource Improvement Association of Alberta, aka FREA, to their community fire guard program. And in speaking to this, we did take, we did make good use of this grant last summer to do a major cleanup of the understory in the area around the water treatment facility. This year, we would move further into the Bear Creek Corridor to continue that protection. We know that the understory does contribute significantly to the opportunity for wildfire to take place, and this is one way that we can mitigate those circumstances. It's not to say that there will never be a forest fire in that area, as there's many types of fire, but it does, it does mitigate those opportunities to some extent. There's a number of phases that will take place over a few years, I believe, in this project, but this is specifically for Phase 2. So I would ask council to support the motion.
Thank you for that. Council Blackmore, any discussion or debate? I'll just say, I'm looking forward to this. I think it's a great way to help continue to protect our city, and I know a lot of us do use those trails, and that there, there's an enhanced safety component to this as well, I feel like, for people using the trail. So it's kind of a double win for us. Council O'Toole.
Yes, I'm fully supportive of this. I did have a number of residents that lived up in the Crystal Ridge area last year reach out to me and said they would be willing to help work with the Parks Department as a neighborhood association, that they would love to be able to just pack wood out and maybe possibly cut it up. And I was just wondering what the administration has to say about having a, not employee, but somebody that wants to volunteer to support this program.
Okay, thanks for that question. I'll look to administration. Chief Lemieux.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's certainly something we could look at and work with neighborhood associations. There are some risks involved, but we're certainly not going to close that door, and we'll certainly have a conversation with the neighborhood association to see what can be done. The, that particular area has been brought to our attention and is on the list, but there are many areas that require attention on our list, so it's a matter of prioritizing. But certainly, we'll take your information into advice, and we'll certainly have a conversation with the neighborhood association.
Thank you very much. No, there's, there are people out there that just want to give back to their program and to their city, and also they live around there, and they want to make their part, they want to do their part to support the initiatives that the city is doing, so.
I think it's important to recognize that the material is not removed from the forest, but it's simply shredded or chipped on-site. So it creates that duff, or that layer of material that stays quite damp and does not really attract fire.
Thanks for that, Council, or Mayor Clayton, sorry.
Thanks, Chair Plott. Really support this program. Think it's a great initiative. Had the opportunity to speak with Minister Lowen this morning in regards to the risks that Alberta may be facing as we head into fire season. Although we look like we're in a better position this year than last, May is the month that is truly the strongest indicator for what our fire season could potentially unfold to be. My question for Chief Lemieux is in regard to the Fire Smarting, which I think is a great initiative. And so providing recommendations to residents to reduce wildfire risk is extremely important. And I'm, what I don't recall in these conversations is how those who are in that corridor that has been assessed to be the high-risk areas, do they put their hand up? Are we going to be knocking on doors? How do the residents that are in those adjacent high-risk areas get involved to have that, their properties fire assessed?
Thank you for the question through the deputy mayor. So a couple ways to do that. Certainly, we'll be working with our communications department to get the information out there, so that people are aware that the risk assessment is a tool that's available to them. But we'll also be visiting, doing some door-to-door into certain neighborhoods that are in those particular areas. So it's a, there's a couple opportunities there, but certainly there'll be a very intensive communication portion of this project.
Great, thank you.
Okay, thanks for that. Seeing nobody in the queue, we will go to the motion. Did you want to close on that, Council Blackmore? Are you good? Okay, please vote. And that carries. Mayor Clayton, I just see your hand up. Did you have something you want to pop in the queue?
Nope, all good.
Okay, thank you. So we'll just go back to meeting highlights, please.
Thank you. The Grand Prairie Police Service is establishing a community standards unit, which will be introduced and comprised of six trained police officers led by an experienced supervisor. This unit is mandated to address the social and civil disorder occurring in the city, primarily downtown, and in other affected areas such as the park systems. Additionally, the unit will focus on traffic enforcement and all applicable and appropriate provincial legislation and city bylaws. At the RCMP, the new officer in charge, Superintendent Steve McLeod, officially started at the detachment February 25th. The Grand Prairie Police Service New Recruit Officer Orientation began February 24th. And this is a three-week program where the new officers will be obtaining their PROS certification and completing multiple other training programs, and will be at the end of it. other training programs. And will be at the end of it, truly officers. The Housing and Community Development Youth Advisory Council members delivered a presentation to the Grand Prairie Police Commission in February, highlighting their community involvement in the 23-24 year, and their commitment to improving youth engagement in the community. As part of the Aging Well Action Plan, the city is partnering with Grand Prairie Primary Care Network to launch a social prescribing initiative for residents 55 and older. And so, this program addresses the social determinants of health and helps connect individuals to community supports that complement medical care. The initiative is funded by the Province of Alberta and aims to bridge the gap between healthcare and social services, enhancing overall well-being for older adults in our community. And in January, the city's Home Support Program served 262 residents and conducted 10 new assessments. In, there's nothing like having your page suddenly closed. In Recreation, the Eastlink Centre hosted an exciting intermission in the Storm Gameo on February 28th. Attendees had the chance to learn about membership options and to win a one-year family membership. This engagement continued March 1st with a special one-day punch pass promotion, offering extra punches based on the number of goals the Storm scored during the game. All punch passes sold on March 1st were sold at 12 visits for the price of 10 due to the two goals scored by the Storm. And under Events and Programming, Canadian rock band Theory of a Dead Man performed a sold-out show at the Bowls. We're looking forward to comedy icon Russell Peters coming and on March, sorry, on February 8th. And the Storm will host the Ford McMurray Oil Barons. They already did March 7th and 8th. And they will wrap up their regular season on March 14th and 15th against Lord Minister Bobcats. The Storm has already clinched a playoff spot, so we're excited about that. And for those with little people, summer camp registration is now open, and those spots are filling quickly. So if you wish to send your little people to camp, don't, don't delay. That concludes my report.
Thank you for that, Counsel Blackmore. Moving on to our Financial Administrative Services Committee, I'll look to Counsel Berg.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Plott. I would like to move Counsel adopt the minutes of the Financial and Administrative Services Committee meeting held March 4th as presented.
Thanks for the motion. Let's vote. Thanks for that. I'll just come back to Counsel Berg for some business arising. I just did want to ask Counsel if they had any questions before Counsel Berg makes the motion, because once we make the motion, there's no discussion or debate, as some folks weren't on this committee to ask questions previously. So now would be your time if you had any questions on the next motion. Okay, seeing none, Counsel Berg.
All right. So I would like to move Counsel give first reading the borrowing bylaw, C-1474 is presented. And just to speak to this, this is the air-supported recreation facility, designed as a 135,000 square foot facility featuring turf interior that is designed to serve as a multi-purpose, multi-sport recreation center that will be on the north end. An RFP has been issued for the design and construction of the recreation facility up in Trader Ridge. Based on past RFEI results, Administration's expecting the project costs will exceed 10 million. However, there will be other funding sources recommended to Counsel once the RFP is closed and we have more accurate costing available.
Okay, thanks for that, Counsel Berg. Please vote on that. And that carries, and we'll just come back to you for your meeting highlights, please.
All right, just, let me pull it up. All right, so taxation and assessment work continues with taxpayers for the upcoming tax sale. Administration is out in the downtown area picking up changes for the VIA tax. Financial management, external auditors are on-site to complete the 2024 year-end audit work. And spring is just around the corner, so procurement and supply chain management, current open bids include supply and delivery of topsoil, engineering design for a climbing wall at the Activity Reception Centre, waste and recycling services, road rehab, Phase Three, Arcade Slab Remediation, asphalt mix supply, tree supply and planting services. And then, as just we discussed, the air-supported rec facility. And in Geographical and Information Technology Services, point-to-point network connections are being installed at various city facilities for operational business requirements. And that's my report.
Okay, thanks for that, Counsel Berg. We'll move on to our Operational Services Committee, and I'll look to Counsel O'Connor.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Plott. I'd like to move that Counsel adopt the minutes of the Operational Services Committee meeting held March 4th as presented.
Thank you for that. And that carries. And you had an item of business as well, Counsel O'Connor.
Yes, thank you Deputy Mayor Plott. I'd like to move Counsel reduce the trigger for residential snow removal to 10 centimeters. And this came up at Counsel Committee meeting that needed to address some of the issues that we've experienced of what the trigger is. And, and I think it's important that we look at this, and we should be looking at bringing back more discussion at a later Counsel Committee of the Hall.
Thanks for the motion, Counsel O'Connor. I just want to confirm with Admin, so this is just to reduce it to 10 centimeters. This isn't changing the policy, though? This is just, this is again, that's through the season, I just want to clarify that.
Yeah, thanks Chair Plott. So what this would do is it would bring the trigger from 13 centimeters currently to 10 centimeters. Right now, we have budgeted based on the 13 centimeters. So at 13 centimeters, we're anticipating three rounds of snow removal for residential during the calendar year. 10 centimeters would be four. So as of this year, depending on how much snow, we would just be running a deficit at the end of the year if we had to do more than three.
Okay, thanks for that. Mayor Clayton.
Question for Chief Lavine as well. Tell me what your expectation was in regards to bringing back a snow removal evaluation and conversation at the end of, let's call it, the snow season. But at some point, I would assume May or, so tell me when you were planning to bring it back, and how, how you see that unfolding? Is it Administration's coming back with recommendations? Is it going to be a workshop for Counsel based on what they heard in the community? Tell me how you see that conversation unfolding, and when we expect that conversation to happen.
Yeah, thanks Mayor Clayton. Right now, we would likely be bringing it back sometime in May, assuming snow is wrapped up by then. What we'll look at is, we'll reflect any of the changes that have occurred since the last review. So there'll be a little bit of housekeeping that we'll bring forward. And we'll also assess any of the concerns that we've heard over the course of the winter here. So we can bring back some of those housekeeping amendments, ensure that we are reflecting the current direction for policy. And then, we can work with Counsel on any other amendments that Counsel may want to see.
Thank you for that. So, just to confirm that, that conversation will come back to a Counsel Committee of the Hall, or will it come back to a actual Operational Committee?
Thanks Chair Plott. We can bring it back to Counsel Committee of the Hall if that's the desire.
I'm looking around. I think for me, the preference would be that. I think it's one of those pretty high-level conversations that it's, as some folks aren't on that Operational Committee, it'd be nice if it was Counsel Committee of the Hall. But I don't know if we need to prescribe a motion. I've seen lots of head nods here, so I think Admin can, can see that. So, so no more discussion or debate on there? Or Mayor Clayton, did you have another question on that?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I just, I'm unclear. I seem to have missed this earlier. Is this motion being brought forward from Counsel O'Connor as a preference in his opinion, or did Administration bring this recommendation forward?
So this was brought forward from the Operational Services Committee last week.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Blackmore.
Thank you Counselor Plott. I, kind of a heads up, I guess, to Administration is, I have talked about the fact that we seem to have, in the, I don't know how many years I've lived in Grand Prairie, a spring melt somewhere around February every year, which always creates problems with transportation and our roads, both with impassable frozen ruts in residential areas, and numerous potholes. So, I would like us to figure out if there's some kind of policy trigger that we could build into our snow removal budget, or into our snow removal policy that would deal with this, I don't want to call it surprise, but we always act surprised when the spring melt comes. And, and yes, sorry, it's not even a spring melt, mid-winter melt. I don't need any response now, but when this does come back in May with the report, I will be asking questions then, and I would like to see something for then.
Thanks for that. Counsel Blackmore. Counsel O'Connor, did you want to close on this?
I'm sorry, I hadn't.
Oh, sorry, Mayor Clayton, go ahead.
Thanks. I will support the motion. I think it's a, we've tried and looked at how it was at 13 centimeters. I don't think that it ended up being enough, but I look forward to the larger conversation, because I think not just about the amount of snow falling. It's really, as Counsel Blackmore mentioned it, the freeze and thaw. It's the, the melting of windows onto sidewalks, and residents can't keep up. It's the, it's the spilling of, of other precipitation onto roads and freezing. It's the rutting. It's, it's many things. And, and so, I actually don't know if doing one more round would have mitigated some of the issues that we saw this year, because there was so many freeze and thaws. But there are substantial issues. And so, I look forward to having a grander conversation on all of the snow removal in May approximately. But for today, I'm happy to support this motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor Clayton. Counsel O'Connor.
Yes, thank you Mayor Clayton for, and Counsel Blackmore for reiterating the concerns that people have expressed to us. So I'm looking for the, to the larger conversation later on after the season is over, and I will, is over, and I will also be asking some questions, albeit that we need to try and keep our budget in line. But I think it's well worth it. So please support this motion.
Thanks Counsel O'Connor. Please vote.
Press key in favor.
And that carries. I'll just come back to Counsel O'Connor with your meeting highlights, please.
Yes, thank you very much. Just have to open up the, the meeting again. Thank you. Under Engineering and Transportation Services, crews are currently working 24 hours on potholes. I think we'll see that changing as the next freeze thaw. We're expecting 20 centimeters of snow on Wednesday, which, oh, so water trucks and hydroback crews are responding to flooding issues and open drains. I won't mention that one. Request for tenders for road rehabilitation Phase Two, and request for proposal for Mission Estates Storm Rehabilitation. And Corporate Facility Management have now been posted request for tenders for exterior door replacement at the Bonnetts Energy Centre, and this has been allowed for in our budget. And request for tenders for the parkside slab remediation. Administration provided tours of the Eastlink and Design Works Centre to local area high school students. And under Environment and Parks, RFQ for tree supply and installation has now been posted. RFQ for aerial mosquito control contract is now closed. And due to warmer weather and unsafe conditions, Administration has closed all outdoor hockey rinks. And that's my report. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for that, Counsel O'Connor. So we head into our Correspondence, and our first item is, we just recently had an AGM from our Downtown Association. I would just look for somebody to make a motion. Counsel Blackmore.
Thank you Counselor Plott. I would move that Counsel appoint Diane Lauren to the Grand Prairie Downtown Association Board for a term ending March 1st, 2026. And also, that we appoint Catherine Ridgway, Kendra Davis, and Marius Hodas to the Downtown, Grand Prairie Downtown Association Board for terms ending March 1st, 2028. And in speaking to that, the Downtown Association did recently have their annual general meeting. And as a result of elections there, these motions need to be, the appointments need to be formally approved by the City of Grand Prairie due to the policy that governs the Downtown Association. So I'd ask you to support these names coming forward.
Thanks for your motion, Counsel Blackmore. And I appreciate all these folks who are letting their names stand on the work they do do for Downtown Association. So seeing nobody in the queue, please vote. And that, and that carries. So for our next item, we'll go to Correspondence, and we have something for Aquitara Utilities, and I'll look to our Financial Administrative Services for an opening, please.
Thank you. Annual discretionary dividends require unanimous consent of the original shareholders. So we just need a motion to support the 2024 discretionary dividends for Aquitara.
Okay, thank you for that intro. Counsel Berg.
Yeah, just business, no, no questions. I would like to direct the mayor to sign unanimous consent for discretionary dividends as requested by Aquitara Utilities, Inc., on behalf of the City of Grand Prairie.
Thanks for the motion. Discussion, debate. Seeing nobody in the queue, please vote. And that carries. So we have no delegation of business or motions, so we will recess now, and we'll readjourn here at 6 o'clock. Thank you. Thank you.
This is a great collection of people. We had over almost 150 people in attendance for that, learning everything about how to preserve wetlands, how to understand some of the scientific studies that they were rolling through. Obviously, I didn't because I can barely describe it. But one of the coolest things that I found there was the presentation on the water courses and how we do proper bridge construction, culvert maintenance and stuff like that. And to that end, the province of Alberta, working with AWC3 partners, ended up creating these cool water course guidebooks that are hot off the press, actually, just brand-new, 2024. And I thought it would be a good idea to grab not one but two presents for our Operational Services Chief, Mr. Glavin, to hand out to either Mr. Nellis or maybe Mr. De Vries when we start talking about building roads over top of our Bear Creek as we discussed last week in changing our transportation master plan to address 116th and 132nd. So with that, Chief Glavin, this is for your team. You can also find copies online as well. These are the printed copies. So I had to charm my way into an extra copy there because we only had 75 available at the conference. But a very worthwhile conference. I encourage every member of council in the community, the next time this happens in two years, stay tuned to it because there is lots of great information. Some of it will go over your head like it did over mine. But when we're talking about building cities and the right way to do things and how important water is to all life, this is the type of conference that you want to go to, especially living in Alberta's boreal. From there, I also attended some other events that council has discussed, the Women of Influence Award. Just a big congratulations to all of our great women in this community, the ones who were nominated, the ones who won, and the ones who have yet to be nominated, because I think we should celebrate our women every day because they are strong influences in all of our lives. And I say that as assumed to be that again. I also attended the Pregnancy Care Centre 10-Year Gala with Councillor O'Connor. We helped with the spotting, as Councillor O'Connor stated. With all of Grand Prairie, we went an evening with Grand Prairie to get in the faces of our government peeps, with local businesses, the college, and many other partners that helped make Grand Prairie so great. It's always a good thing. And, you know, sometimes I wonder, are we doing the right thing? And I talked with their CEO, Burke, about it. And he said, no, it was a success, and it keeps being a success. The day that the Edmonton people don't show up and we get half the people we asked to come is probably when we should rethink it. But it's good to be forefront in the minds of government as many times as possible. Also, there was a kind of a week of goodbyes. So I said goodbye, I helped to say goodbye to Amanda Westwater, who's been a loyal City of Grand Prairie employee for many, many years. She's gone above and beyond her calls of duty to ensure that us cats were herded in the right direction and that things were done with the greatest of ease. So thank you very much to Amanda for all your work with council, and best of luck in your future endeavors. And of course, Wendy Bosch, how could I not say goodbye to that lady? I was lucky enough to join Councillor O'Connor and Councillor Bosch for her last official duty, breaking bread at Eftar. So that was really nice to be able to be a part of that. For Wendy, we didn't get a picture or anything, but we wanted one. We maybe should have got one. We missed on all those. But to Wendy, I know you're not far. You're still with the Chamber of Commerce. So we're going to be rock step a lot of the way still. It was just such an honor to serve with you as a friend. I know I got her into this gig. I told her she was going to run for council about six months before she actually decided to, and I just kept pushing her. Well, she'll tell you. I literally forced her into this gig. But anyways, no, no, it's not because she still had free will at the end of the day. Sorry, everyone, you can't hear the sidebars. But in reality, Wendy went from being somebody who asked lots of questions to someone asked very thoughtful and tenacious questions, and her growth was astounding. She had this council term, and I really thought she'd be serving a second term on here. But best of luck with the chamber and all the good things to come. Finally, I was honored to be able to attend the candlelight unveiling of the Women of War Memorial at Veterans Memorial Garden with Councillor Blackmore, giving greetings as Deputy Mayor. There we were able to honor World War II veteran Doris Garrett, as well as be bear witness to the blessing of Brigadier General Vanessa Hanrahan, which was a big honor and a wonderful blessing if you were there. I got it all on tape, but not on my camera. So hopefully they'll share it out on social media. Thanks for listening to me, everyone.
Thanks for that, Councillor Thiessen. We're going to skip back. Councillor O'Toole had a few items he forgot to mention.
Well, I don't want to be accused of telling a lie, but it was only 20 years in business, not 30. But you've got to remember, I'm an older guy, and there's lots of information being mentioned at that little celebration. So I apologize, but 20 years in business is a phenomenal number, considering the growth that they've done in those years. So that's my report, finally.
Okay, thanks for that, Councillor O'Toole. Councillor Blackmore?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Palat. It has been a busy couple of weeks. I too attended the farewell coffee for Amanda Westwater, who has joined the dark side at the Grand Prairie Public School Board. I know that she'll enjoy herself there, but not as much as when she was with us, of course. I attended an airport commission meeting. This was the meeting where our draft audited financial statements were presented. No surprises will be coming forward to council when those audited statements are filed with our own finance department. Very smooth sailing there. I attended a night with Grand Prairie in Edmonton, where we met with many of the province's MLAs and quite a number of business people from Edmonton attended as well. One in particular told me that in Edmonton, it's just simply accepted that a night with the Grand Prairie is the place to be. So I think that's pretty good. Coming back from there, I attended the Bear Creek Folk Festival reveal along with some other members of council. I personally am really excited to hear Serena Ryder take the stage at the Folk Festival again, and also Jewel. Those are two groups that I'm really looking forward to. I attended an Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting along with Councillor Berg, who is the Chair of that committee. We talked a lot about tariffs. Probably not surprised by that. And then last week, I attended AB Muny's Spring Caucus along with some members of council, and also had a meeting there with Municipal Affairs Minister MacIver. I don't know if we managed to press home any points. He's pretty good at sidestepping them. I really did enjoy the premier's comments and her live Q and A. I felt that there was some really, it was a really good discussion, and I was very impressed, and my husband was very impressed, that Grand Prairie managed to be in the lineup of questions twice with both Councillor O'Connor and Councillor Bressi. I attended the Women of Influence Awards, and I wanted to congratulate the winners because, you know, they're not really winners. They're people who, women who floated to the top of a list of really phenomenal people. The young girl who won the Next Generation Award is Ella Dobovich. The game changer was Melissa St. Pierre, who owns Petals and Posies downtown. Workplace leadership went to Christie Doucette. Miranda La Roche at the Friendship Centre won the Community Leadership Award, and I think that all of us have had, have been in meetings with Miranda. She's very good. And finally, the Lifetime Impact Award went to Lori Grant, who's not very tall, but she's pretty tall in other ways. Takes up a lot of space. She's great. I also attended the Recognition of Women of War, which was the unveiling of the Women of War Memorial and celebrates women in war throughout history. So while they recognize some women from Grand Prairie who took place, who did work in the Second World War, really, the unveiling of the War Memorial is to recognize women's role in war throughout history. At that same time, it was great to sit down and chat again with Brigadier General Vanessa Hanrahan. Her promotion to Brigadier General puts her in charge of the Provost Wing of the Armed Forces, which, in terms that we're more familiar with, really means the military police. She's also not very big, but she's a tightly packed piece of dynamite. And it was really nice to have a chance to talk with her again. I haven't seen her for about a year, and I'm always so amused by the story she tells me. And that concludes my report.
Thanks for that. Councillor Blackmore, Councillor Bressi, please.
Great, thank you. Well, I for one am kind of upset that you're not excited for Walk Off the World, or Earth. Oh, that's embarrassing.
I don't even know what that is.
Yeah.
It sounds like a Flat Earth Society thing.
It's the headliner I'm most excited for. Although, I'm excited for Serena Ryder, Jewel, and my wife is very excited for Jewel. A few things I got to attend was, this was not in Grand Prairie, it was in Edmonton. It was purely personal matter, but I thought that council would be interested. I went to the Slush Cup Soccer Tournament in Edmonton, which allegedly is the largest youth soccer tournament in North America, with over 500 games played. So definitely think relevant and remains some work we're doing that we're just down the highway from the largest youth soccer tournament in North America. I got to attend the Healthcare Task Force along with Councillor Berg, Mayor Clayton, and members of administration. This is a group that, I remind council, we directed meet occasionally to guide our physician attraction strategy. And so we got to hear some updates about the exciting work our administration is doing and give a little bit of guidance about what should come back to council in the future. And I'm really proud of the work that our staff are doing to build relationships with HS and Alberta Health, and more importantly, to build relationships with physicians that are already in our community and future physicians who will be in our community. So thank you to everybody who's involved in that. Just between council sessions, I got to attend the Golden Age Centre 50-year anniversary with Councillor O'Connor. It was ironic and kind of cool to, about an hour or so after we passed our Aging Well Together strategy, to go and get to celebrate such a significant milestone with the Golden Age Centre. And we had to leave a little bit early, just as the delicious smelling dinner was coming out. But we did get to hear a few speeches about the history of the Golden Age Centre and all the people that have made it possible. So thank you to the decades and decades and decades of volunteers that have made that important organization hum. As was already mentioned, we had an Alberta Muny's Municipal Leaders Caucus as well as President Summit. Thank you for those of you that made the time to go out there. I think the most interesting part for me, other than getting to get in front of ministers and the premier to share advocacy priorities, was a session with mid-sized cities, where we got to hear how a couple other cities are doing their capital budgets in ways that are getting them better prices for their taxpayer dollars. And so there's some specific ideas there that I look forward to bugging C. Holberg and our CFO about in the, in the future. I think they could be good here. And then I also had an Alberta Municipalities Board meeting. It was a busy meeting. The two highlights of it were Alberta Health came in to talk about the healthcare restructuring we've got in Alberta right now. So appreciate getting to provide some municipal input on that. And of course, we were quite busy with the budget and communicate, unpacking and communicating the provincial budget. And just the real quick highlights of the budget is, as Alberta municipalities, we're really excited to see the province fully restore grants in place of taxes. They're paying their full, well, in two years, they're going to be paying their full property taxes again for provincial buildings that are in municipalities, for the city of Grand Prairie. My understanding is that's worth about a quarter million dollars. So really appreciate that. Also, really appreciate them continuing commitment to low income transit. That's really important for a lot of our residents and for some of our businesses as well. Weren't so excited to see them cut the Local Growth, Sustain Growth and Sustainability Grant, which was a new program that they started just last year. Supposed to be a three-year program, but it turns out it's going to only be a one-year program. And that's really disappointing because most of the, all of, actually, I should say rather, all of the application-based provincial infrastructure programs were ineligible to apply for. That was the one that we, as a city, can actually apply for that's application-based. So really disappointed to see that cut. And I think the biggest disappointment in the provincial budget was the provincial property taxes are going up. Rates are going up about 6% plus assessments have gone up. So the province is going to be collecting about 14% more property taxes next year than it did, or this year than it did last year. And of course, I think that's going to be a problem for our residents who have to pay more. And I think we're going to have to have some conversations about how do we very clearly communicate that to our residents, that that's the province downloading costs to them. That being said, I do have to give credit to both Minister MacIver and Premier Smith. Both of them are really clear that they fully expect us to really clearly communicate that to our residents. So I did appreciate them saying that, and I think we should take them up on their suggestion. And we should very, very clearly communicate that to our residents. And so that's my report.
Thanks, Councillor Bressi. Mayor Clayton?
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Palat. Any of the things that have been mentioned already, I just wanted to mention some of the things that I did. I brought greetings at the mentioned Alberta Boreal Water Management Conference on behalf of council. It's great to see a room full of purely engaged people on the future of water management. So thanks for that opportunity. Attended the provincial budget in Edmonton, as well as the evening with Grand Prairie, where we had an opportunity to update Edmonton and the MLAs and ministers about the work we've been doing in the last year. However, also an opportunity to have conversations about future investments and opportunities into Grand Prairie and our region. Recently, with C. A. O. Burke, had the opportunity to meet the Special Olympic ambassadors, to get a chance. These two individuals are our ambassadors as we gear up for Special Olympics summer. And I can tell you, they're very engaged in the community, and they will continue to be out and about, and see and may run into them. I brought greetings on behalf of council of the technical search and rescue vehicle unveiling. Also, as mentioned, thanks, Councillor Berg. Participated in the fashion show at the Black History Month Gala, which was one of those things that you put your hand up to do and often second guess your decision. But it was a lot of fun and a great event. So thanks for mentioning that, Councillor Berg. Also, attended a Community Rail Advocacy Alliance meeting, getting an update in regards to where our next direction is in advocating for better rail service and the rail disparities that many industries face. Thanks, Councillor Thiessen, for mentioning the, let's say, the leaving of Amanda Westwater. Amanda has supported myself in council for many years and was an individual who had foresight and sometimes did things without even having to ask. So she will be missed. And Councillor Bosch definitely brought all of her heart and great wisdom to the table in what she represented, and she will be very missed around the council table. But saying that, I've already had my first opportunity to have a meeting with her, as well as Chairman John Anderson, and introducing them to an individual in our community who had some great ideas that I thought would be best served by the chamber. So great to see Wendy transition into that role. Also, recently met with the, with MLAs Dick and MLAs Weed, and Minister Newdorff as council's probably number one priority in regards to electricity distribution. Had the privilege of asking a question at Alberta Muny, and it's something that I know all of my colleagues, as well as many municipal electeds across the act of service area, will continue to keep at the forefront of conversations with ministers and MLAs across Canada. We are continuing that advocacy. It's extremely important that we don't put our foot off the gas as the gap is widening between what act of service area municipalities such as ours are paying in comparison to Edmonton and Calgary. It's now up to three and a half times more in certain areas. So I had a meeting with Minister Newdorff, talking about opportunities. So had a meeting with Minister Newdorff, talking about opportunities and pushing that agenda item. So thank you for my colleague's support and asking questions at Alberta Munis. It's important that we don't let up on that one. Brought greetings on behalf of council and read the proclamation for the Women of Influence Awards. As mentioned, great women that represented our community were awarded last week, and thanks to our administration for putting on an incredible event. It really was, you know, 250 women sold out event, recognizing the incredible work that these other individuals do in our community. And something to be noted, a record number of nominations. So as that event continues to grow, it's something that I think we should be proud of. And thank you to administration for the hard work. As mentioned, attended the Alberta Municipalities Spring Caucus, but it was a great, there were some great takeaways for that for me. The mid-sized city one was an opportunity where, thanks to Councillor Bressi, giving me the opportunity to talk about how we use data in our most recent intermunicipal collaboration framework agreement. And really, I had many colleagues after thank me for that conversation because we are a little bit ahead of the curve in regards to the approach that we took in our ICF. Met with Minister MacIver to talk about some of our concerns and advocating for continued support, talking about G-Pot and many other opportunities. Last week, as was mentioned, attended that Healthcare Task Force meeting. I think as this unfolds with the team of ambassadors, it will be a great addition to the work that InvestGP and our organization and council are already doing in regards to attraction and retention of healthcare professionals. And last but not least, last Friday, brought greetings on behalf of council at the Farm Family Dinner, where we recognized the Aldi family, who if you know, and I know Councillor O'Connor knows them well, if you know the Fricie bars, or if you know Haskap berries, you know the Aldi family. So they were recognized for their dedication to food processing, to farm-to-table initiatives, and the work that they do within agriculture. So it was great to see them recognized. And with that, I wish you all good evening, and I'll see you soon. Thanks, Councillor, or Palat, rather.
Hey, thanks for that, Mayor Clayton. I'll just highlight a few things that have meant that. I had a Grand Prairie Local Immigration Partnership Meeting that I attended last week. Very excited about the biometric scanners. It was just before it was announced publicly that it was announced to them, and so they were very excited and were very grateful for the advocacy work that we have done on their behalf. From there, we approved our Terms of Reference, and then we had a great conversation about this new integration roadmap booklet that we're coming out with. It'll be a great tool for people that move to Grand Prairie. It's got everything from where you show up, where you're going to live, all the stuff that's going to help you get set up in our community. From there, we switched the conversation a little bit about our municipal census, and it switched directions a little bit in that although we made this great roadmap, there was a comment that really resonated to me with all the temporary foreign workers that may not get their extensions. We're going to have to help people exit the community maybe at some point as well, which is not something I thought we'd be having to deal with, but unfortunate. And a stat that was thrown out in that meeting that really hit home was 92%, of the Ukrainians that have come to Grand Prairie want to stay here. So it just shows you what a welcoming community, and just hopefully we can retain as many of those folks as possible in our community. From there, I just wanted to highlight again the night in Edmonton. I feel like of all the years that I've been, this was the most optimism I've heard from developers outside of the region and inside of the region. Want to be cautiously optimistic, but I feel like there's some potential projects coming our way, and it was just nice to see that optimism and hear that optimism from proponents that have been on the fence for quite a while. From there, I attended the AB Munis' Spring Caucus. I really want to thank Councillor Bressi for his work at AB Munis, and as well, Mayor Clayton's an absolute beast in that provincial level. The amount of connectivity the city of Grand Prairie has now with, around the province and with our MLAs, I've never seen it before. Last term, we could barely get a meeting with a minister. We had a one-on-one meeting with Minister MacIver, with Reeve Marshall as well attending, just to show how collaborative our region is. But even that night, we got to have a supper with him, and Councillor Blackmore had mentioned it's a hard gentleman to break, but the fact that we had his ear for just about three hours in the same day to keep harping on the same issues we're having in our region, just again, I can't thank Mayor Clayton enough to get us in those conversations because last term, we didn't have a lot of those. In this term, it feels like we're, I hear our proponents go up or our delegates go up to speak, and without even introducing themselves, most of the ministers know Dylan and Jackie by name, and that's a really good spot for Grand Prairie to be in. And Mike O'Connor tends to find people's attention as well. But I just, I really, again, want to thank Mayor Clayton for all that work. I know it doesn't get noticed in our community a lot, but it's showing great, greatly when we go to those meetings, just how well we're received from those ministers and from the premier itself. So thanks for that. And with that, I will adjourn. Have a good night, everybody.